Good evening. I'd like to call to order this Wednesday, January 2nd, special town council meeting. Happy New Year, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the role today, we have Mayor Gromtowski, we have Councilor Andrea Baumgartner, Councilor Rachel Franco, Councilor Leanne O'Bree, Councilor Juliette Parker, and Councilor Joseph Herry. We had notice from everyone else, Councilor Atwater, Councilor Heaton, Councilor Schmidt, that they would not be attending.
Thank you. Salute to the flag, please. Mr. Steinfeld, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please? Thank you.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no recognitions, awards, and memorials that I know of, are we good on that? So then we are on to a public hearing. Item 4A, and this is page three in your agenda packet. Madam Clerk, would you read the call of the hearing, please?
You're recessing for...
Oh, I forgot. We are recessing at, I thank you for reminding me, we are recessing at 6:36 for the public hearing on the town property sale. Okay, now, Madam Clerk, thank you.
So this notice was published in the New London Day, both the 20th of December and the 27th, and it read hereby, notice is hereby given to Connecticut General Statute 7-163E, a public hearing will be held by the Town Council of the Town of Groton, Connecticut, on January 2nd, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Community Room 1 at the Town Hall Annex 134, Groton, Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, to receive comments on the proposal to sell a 0.168-acre portion of the town-owned property, pin number 260819714055, currently known as the No Ink School Public Garden property, to neighboring property co-owners, Christopher Drake. And again, that was published in the New London Day, December 20th and 27th, as required by statute.
So we will have, any members of the public that have signed up, we will have you speak And we have five minutes limit on comments for the public hearing. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. First up is Jeffrey Pritchard.
Jeff Pritchard, 31 West Smithstecavino. I'm representing myself and the Planning Commission. We feel strongly opposed to this transfer of property for a couple of reasons. We have a nice piece of property that could be developed if it were sold, the whole school property as an entity. We're going to have, in the long run, needs for additional housing in the town for senior citizens, as an example, or maybe affordable housing. I'm not saying that's where it should go, but those are potential uses for the property. Nibbling away at it piece by piece by the neighbors is going to destroy the value of that property if we want to sell it or use it for anything. It is town property, it's not neighborhood property, and I think we should keep that in mind. If we look at the assessed value of the property, the assessor assessed it for $1,684.50. It increases the size of the lot that it would be associated with by 36 percent, which is a pretty large amount, which if we end up selling it, we ought to at least get what it's worth. And also, it's not in accordance with the plan of conservation and development. But I would say that we should stop selling property in a piecemeal fashion like this and come up with a policy for how we dispose of the school property, because we have other school property that's in the same condition as this one, where we, the schools have been abandoned, and we don't have a process for disposing of that property. I don't know if anyone has any questions, or...
Not at this time, I think we're going to run through all the speakers first. Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Mr. Steinfeld, followed by Ms. Chipparrini.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name's Mordell Steinfeld, I live at 32 Valley Road, and I'm also a member of the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking here also on my behalf. I've been on the Planning Commission for a considerable amount of time, and in fact, I've served as the Commission, Planning Commission spokesman through the process of a committee that determined what to be done with the No Ink school system. It was long and endurance, and eventually was turned over to the Town Council at that time, who made the determination to make it to the No Ink Garden. However, in that process, the town became responsible to take down the old school building. I went to, just recently, I went to the Public Works Department and asked them for a rundown on the actual cost of what that was to remove the school and all the contamination. To me, that's a considerable sum of money. This was taxpayer money. By selling this property by bits and pieces would certainly benefit adjacent lot owners. There's no doubt about it, you increase the size of your lot, you benefit by it. However, it doesn't serve anything for the rest of the town of Groton's taxpayers, which we paid dearly to get that piece of property in the position that it is. I think it is totally wrong to try to start selling this property by bits and pieces. As Mr. Pritchard stated, it should be sold or considered to be sold in whole, such as all the other properties in town, and we really need to get to the point of determining how and what and where we're going to sell these properties, not just the No Ink school. I firmly believe that to keep it as it is, as a whole, is the most beneficial way financially that the town can do it. What you people decide of what's eventually to become of that property is something that we'd better address shortly. It's just sitting there stagnant. I don't see any great benefit to the area of No Ink at this point. The garden is, to me, a fiasco, and that's all it is over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinfeld. Next up, we have Ms. Chipparrini, followed by Mr. Kane. Mr. Steinfeld, the document that you're distributing, are there enough for the clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year, Gretchen Chipparrini, 87 Phoenix Drive. I'm not, I'm prepared for the next part, but I have to comment on this, because it's been a deplorable situation. I bet you every piece of vegetable they've gotten out of there, we could have, is worth And I'm sure Ms. O'Bree can tell you that property is worth a lot more than $1,500. It's ridiculous. Okay? You know, Mr. Burt says, "We have such a fantastic economic development team, why don't you give it to them and give them a whack at it and try to sell this thing?" We've been protecting people, and I don't know, I don't know the dynamics here of these people who live around this property, but we've been protecting views, and I'm going to mention that in my next part. We've been protecting views there for far, of the ocean, for far too long, and why is this being treated differently than William Sealy's school, Colonel Ledgerd's school? I don't get it. Answer these questions, why is this property, it's a school property? The difference is, you've got a wealthy neighborhood there, you've got a few people that I think some of you know, and you're protecting their views of the ocean. I don't understand it. You know, Councilor Franco, you know, we talked about this a year and a half ago, why don't you put this on the market? Why doesn't one of you say that? I'm sure Mr. Burt can make that happen. Do the same thing as you're doing with the Mystic Oral School over there. And I'm sure some of those people you're coming across, this is a beautiful piece of property. This is gorgeous. This is the best residential property, in my opinion, that we have in Groton. You should have no problem putting a 55, make it 55 and older. Talk to the people where Council O'Bree lives, I'm sure those people would be very interested in that development. They did a nice job there. Well, they should, they don't pay a dime of taxes, we're going to be talking about that. So, yeah, Leanne, we're going to be talking about that. So, you know, give it to your Mr. Burt and to wonderful Mr. Reiner, and let him have a go at it and get this thing so we can start taxing it and reducing our taxes, how about that, for a change? And not breaking it up. I don't understand why you're even entertaining this. It should be a big fat no right off the bat. Should say, "No, we're going to sell it as a whole." So that's all I have to say about that. So I don't know if you want me to stay up here.
No, we're in the public hearing on this particular property.
Oh, there's another person? I'm a little confused.
We're in the middle of the public hearing on the sale of the No Ink thing, and then we've got to close that out, and then we'll go to citizens petitions.
And then I come back.
Yep?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Kane, followed by Sima Evans.
Michael Kane, 51 Jupiter Point Road. I would ask you to please consider not selling this property until there's been a town-wide or council-wide discussion as to what is going to happen to the whole thing. I think it's a mistake to start selling off little pieces. You could, you never know which piece is going to make this property less desirable in the future to someone else. You could be selling the most critical part, and we wouldn't know it. I would compare this if we were selling town vehicles and we decided to start pulling the windshields out of them and selling those. It doesn't make a lot of sense until we've had a conversation as to how we're going to do it, and it may end up being that this is what we do. We sell it little bits and pieces at a time. I don't know that, but we haven't had that conversation, and until we do, I don't think that it's right to start selling off little bits and pieces of it, or prudent, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Sima Evans?
Hello, Sima Evans, 51 Jupiter Point Road, and moderator of the RTM, I don't know if that's pertinent here, but I wanted to speak about this issue, because at our last RTM meeting, we had a similar sale of .09 acres of this property to the spellers, and when we looked at it, when we got our minutes, it had, you know, the outline of three bullets of why the Planning Commission disapproved the sale, and then really, on the second page, almost indistinguishable, was a sentence, "Staff recommends alternative one," with no explanation. And so this raised a procedural issue to me that really concerns me, which is why staff would go in a different direction than a planning commission, which is peopled by residents of this community who we have appointed to be on a body to direct the planning, the future plan of this town. And so this is problematic to me, because I don't think staff should be in the position of pushing things on their own, and I, after we had our RTM debate, it wasn't even clear that there was, we passed this, by the way, but it wasn't even clear that there was a second parcel that was being split off at all. And so I think the fears of the Planning Commission are very real, which is that we're just going to carve off these parcels to people who, you know, live adjacent, and they're de minimis because they're not buildable, and you take a gorgeous parcel of land that could have some value as a whole, and you chop it into little pieces and take it out of the public domain, and basically allow private residents to own these parcels, and you've diminished the total value. So I really feel that the RTM, and I'm speaking here about the process, was misled in our last meeting, because we didn't know there was another little slice being taken out, and we really had no discussion of why the town staff decided to go against the Planning Commission, and that's actually the most disturbing to me, is that we have staff that feel it's within their power to, for whatever reason, which is not explained in the material I have, basically go against what this Planning Commission, many of them who've been on for decades, have, you know, thought was in the best interest of this town. And so that's really concerning to me. So I hope that you'll put a pause on this sale until we do have a comprehensive idea of what we want to do with this property. I think it's really short-sighted to chop it up into little pieces and sell it to adjacent landowners. I think it's ruining the total value of this property, and I think in the future, we need to have someone from the Planning Commission at our meetings if we're discussing things, and we need to have a much fuller explanation of why staff would actually dismiss a commission's finding on an issue like this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have to recognize Mr. Burt at some point, but I just wanted to see if there were any other members of the public who wish to speak at this point. That is, everybody that has signed up to speak on the No Ink property disposition. Is there anybody else? Mr. Burt, you wanted to address the fence issue?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, if you look at, it's kind of hard to tell, but in the aerial, it's a kind of steep hill right there, and at the top of that hill, there's a fence line. The current proposed legal description for the split off would touch into that fence line, so it needs to be adjusted some to, we don't want to lose the fence line, but it's really hard to see there, it's really grown over there, and it's a real steep hill there, and at the top, there's a little fence, so there'd be a slight adjustment that I'm expecting to come through. Mr. Drake's working on it.
Do any of the councilors wish to speak?
I have to ask Mr. Burt a question.
Yes.
When the first parcel was sold off...
We received the staff endorsement, and as it was just stated, there was no explanation on the paperwork. Do you...
Sure. With a couple of things I actually forgot to mention, I have all those things, too. We, first of all, I wanted to touch base on the second request. We have, it's been discussed tonight, different times here, mentioned at the council, and there isn't supposed to be an RTM rep, but I don't like being said misled, because it was mentioned here several times. But the council had an interest, you know, we had, we received the two requests almost simultaneously, within a week or so of each other, and we discussed it here. Council was interested in moving forward. The owners, the neighboring property owners spent a lot of money on it, and I, since the council was, you know, had directed me, yes, we're interested in doing this, that's the direction we're going, and I hate to see the others, the neighbors spending money on this, and I don't want them to be misled, so that's really why.
Right. Because in the scheme of it, these are very small slivers of land.
Right. And I should note that we do have a policy on selling properties, I didn't say what the use should be, but we do have an adopted policy on the process, just to make that clear. And we've got a committee starting next week that's going to look at all our properties and review what kinds of uses could be there, what's the limitations, and the plan is, in the next few months, come back with a proposed policy for the council. However, we'll probably see, maybe the Mystic Education Center come more quickly than that, a couple of things like that, maybe Groton Heights potentially, so...
And I'm just, I'm going to just jump in here. If you look at the map that is in our packet on page five, it shows the steep increase in elevation in the small chunk of land that is in the corner, and it's really, from what I can tell and from what I'm seeing here, it's not going to impact the overall use of the rest of the property. We are aware that breaking the property up into smaller pieces will not be beneficial to the whole town, so we have considered that. But I should not speak for the rest of the council, but I'm prepared to move forward with this. Council O'Bree.
I don't know whether I overlooked it, but when we discussed it, I don't think we had anything saying that the zoning was opposed to it, or planning, I'm sorry.
The letter was in the packets?
It was in the packets. Well, I apologize for that, because, you know, if there is a concern, I think it's probably better to pass on it. I think we should go back and review it and take certainly into consideration what's been said to us, and be sure that we are doing it correctly. I don't think we're probably impacting the property value, but I think it's better that we be, at least myself, I'd like to be much more comfortable with that, and I, so I think it would be good if we just passed on it this evening, reviewed it again.
Just to mention, there's no, there's no, this is just a public hearing, there's no actions or discussions for tonight.
I'm just saying what I thought. I'm not asking you, I can ask for it afterwards, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, sometimes when you're sitting up here, you've got a lot of things you're doing, and you don't do it as well as you might, and so if we can correct that, I think it would be a good idea.
Council Baumgartner, wants to speak.
Now, with this committee that will...
Look at, you know, how the town evaluates the disposition of property, what's the timeframe on the time we're looking at?
You know, it never goes as quickly as you'd like. I would hope in the next three or four months would be my ideal, six months at the latest, but hopefully quicker than that, but I don't want to make promises I can't keep. We have a lot of properties, there's actually a lot of information, because one of the key things we want, one of the first things on my radar is the Fitch, or the community center, what else could go in there that's an immediate concern. So that's kind of the first thing we're going to be tackling, and there's a lot of, some of the other properties that come into play with that, so that's going to take a while to get through before I could say, you know, that's a huge chunk of information, but hopefully in the next few months.
And will we, obviously, you know, the disposition of properties, you know, in Groton, we have lots of school buildings and open space, and so there are many different uses, so will there be kind of a set criteria that, you know, the Town Council can use, or perhaps you can use to...
That's part of what we'll look at.
Okay.
We'll put a report together for the council.
Thank you.
I want to mention one more thing.
Do either of the other councilors wish to speak at this point during the public hearing? Counselor Burt?
I'd like to thank all of you who spoke tonight, bringing your feelings to our attention and your thoughts. I think that this is particularly healthy for our town government. I would only wish that when an issue comes up and people feel strongly about it at the time that it comes up, they would let us know their feelings at that point and not wait until the last gone. And that's the only thing I would say in terms of hoping for better communication with our electorate. But we, I really, I am grateful that people come in and voice their opinions and let us know what they're thinking.
Council O'Bree.
I just wanted to mention one thing that was brought up. Personally, I think the Economic Department, Economic Development Department is doing an excellent job of approaching the sale of the properties that we do have now. There's a lot going on that hasn't quite made it to the top of the bottle yet, but once it does, I think you're going to be very pleased with what's being done. But there truly is a process that has been formed, and I think it's working well. It goes slower than we'd like it to go, but that's because of the process, but they work very hard with trying to get these things lined up so that they can be sold for the best project for the town, so, for what it's worth.
Okay, is there a last call for public input on this particular item? Seeing none, recess the public hearing at 7:00, adjourn the public hearing at 7:00. And we are back into our town council meeting, and we are on to item 5, receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions...
I'm sorry, can I make one comment?
Yes.
I didn't give a recommendation on it, I was just looking at the packet.
I'll show you, I have the packet right here, and I didn't notice it until after the meeting.
Mr. Burt, do you prefer we wait, or can we go on with citizens' petitions?
Excuse me? And I didn't see it, it was on the page. And I was told, I did not believe me, I'm believing someone else, and they'll pick you, whatever.
Are we set? Okay. Item 5, receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is a portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table in front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. We have one citizen signed up to speak, and that's Gretchen Chipparrini.
Gretchen Chipparrini, 87 Phoenix Drive. I'm here today after receiving phone calls from people who are upset about this harmful addition you want to make to the blight ordinance, that is stating that property that is blighted has, and I'm going to skip the first part, has boats or machinery in a state of disrepair that cannot be used for its intended purposes. That's the part people are upset about. I have three passions: cooking fine food, going to auctions and collecting old tools and machinery that are part of our history, and saving them from mistakenly being destroyed, and three, making sure government does not take away our rights as a free people. We are not Greenwich, Connecticut, with the high incomes or huge garages like a Jay Leno has. Groton was and wants to become again a town of creative people who work on submarines, and thus they work with their hands or design mechanical things, and thus often have mechanical hobbies, such as collecting and rehabbing cars, machinery, and boats. So we have to store things outside our yards or driveways while it waits for the time and the money. Who is a judge of disrepair? Someone who does not know a hoot about any of it? I have known people who have bought a destroyed hair shelf catboat or something similar, and it's sat in their yard for years, and at one point is available like new, beautiful boat. What do you want us all to do? Stay indoors and stare at a computer, it's not something my generation has a desire to do. I have a God-given right to use my yard in any way that gives me personal satisfaction. This legislation is discriminatory, unfair, nosey, oppressive, and not smart, especially if you want to attract creative businesses and people to move to Groton. You will turn neighbor against neighbor, neighbor against business, and business against business. I choose not to live in a town of fences, which is one of the largest complaints of those who live in Los Angeles are not very New England-like. This Christmas, I got myself some camping equipment, because I want, thought it'd be fun to camp out in my own yard. Am I now going to receive a NASA letter from the town and possible seizure of my property because some neighbor does not like my passion or how I go about doing it? None of us have chosen to live in a condo project with association rules like you are proposing for this entire town. Council O'Bree, you had a choice to live at Oddfellows and not have to live under their rules. Most of us have no choice. We are stuck here because no one wants to buy our properties with the high property taxes that you are going to continue to raise again and again. And I and many other Groton citizens business who enjoy the use of their yards, properties and hobbies are not a criminal, nor do we consume taxpayer dollars for having these passions or uses. these passions or uses. Far more criminal is this council ignoring the minimum of $56 million that Balfour Beatty has consumed of our services since 2004 and continues to consume, and refuse to go after it as five other towns in New England have. Mark Ophring is collecting a three-digit pension when he elected to do his job and take on Balfour Beatty. He should minimum be stripped of his pension as he put Groton to a very bad economic position. Counsel O'Bry, you live at Oddfellows, and that one dime of your personal income paid to them goes into paying property tax while you continue to consume our services for free like Balfour Beatty. This is wrong, and you are wrong for benefiting from it. Again, I'm not gonna go into the Noake thing, that's wrong too. There is nothing I despise more than a politician who creates legislation escalating budgets that they themselves do not have to pay or live under the same burdens as their constituency. Counsel O'Bry, you meet that definition...
Ms. Chipperini, excuse me, but you please cease with the personal tax.
Well, it's the truth. In fact, you have told people...
It's not appropriate, thank you.
It's the truth, it's fact. In fact, you have told people that you can never afford to live at Oddfellows if you had to pay the taxes for your place. It's convenient that the rest of us are here to pay your taxes instead. I have no problems in Groton anywhere, I see no problems in Groton anywhere for a need of this type of oppressive legislation. You choose not to do such a thing through zoning because that requires public input. Instead, you use the sneaky method to control our personal property rights.
You have one minute?
You're practicing autocratic government, opposite of a true democracy. Autocratic governments most often result in its citizens becoming destitute. What is your endgame for this town? To own all properties due to tax and penalty seizures? At the rate we're going, Groton government is going to be the only thing left here.
Your time is up, thank you.
It is not, that was not a minute.
That's five minutes. Is there anyone else who is here to speak? There's no one else signed up.
Stop, be short, you cannot bring your body.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and you did that on purpose. Let's try to treat people.
Response to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns, item number six on the agenda. Counsel Franco.
We have received numerous complaints regarding blighted homes in Groton. I do not want to overstep and tell people what they can and cannot do with their property, but there are numerous complaints about people in blighted issues, and they have contacted this council, and we feel that there is a need to do something about it.
Mr. Bird.
I just wanted to make it clear for anyone that doesn't know, we have an existing blight ordinance, we're just making changes to it, so it's not a new ordinance. And I do get many blight complaints in my office. And just to mention, Balfour Beatty is being worked on by the town council, and that issue's being addressed. And Oddfellows was addressed by the last council, so, and a payment in lieu of, basically a services agreement was arrived at, so, just to mention that.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors who would like to respond? Counsel O'Bry.
Just so you know, you know, I have a couple of other properties I do pay taxes on, and I beg your pardon?
Excuse me, excuse me. The floor belongs to the councillor right now.
Thank you. I own a house, I own a building, I pay taxes on them both. And I don't...
Excuse me, you are out of order. The floor belongs to Counsel O'Bry right now?
He won.
Out of order, out of order.
Never mind.
We're out of order, we'll have a recess right now, thank you. Okay, we are out of recess at seven seventeen, and we are on to item number seven, consent calendar. Counsel Baumgardner.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar, so...
Moved by Baumgardner and seconded by Zepary. I just wanted to briefly thank all of the people that have made donations. There are some very generous donations that have been made to the town on a regular basis, so we thank all of them. Is there any discussion on minutes? Let's see. Counsel Franco.
I am on the packet, page twenty-two.
Twenty-two, I'm looking, I'm looking, yes.
Section six, the paragraph right above the motion towards the bottom where we voted. It states that Counsel Franco noted that she thought this was a percentage of the required 25%, not in addition to, and that's not what I was saying. What I had actually stated was that I thought it was six and a half percent of the 25 was state-required, and our goal was for the overall job.
So, the clerk can take a look at that and adjust it as needed? Thank you. Thank you. And the minutes are correct, but I spoke incorrectly, and I sent an email out to everybody after that because I misspoke, but the minutes are accurate, so. Anything else on the minutes? Anything else on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent calendar with the correction to the minutes, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously with six councillors, six zero zero. Communications and reports. Counsel Baumgardner.
Hope everyone enjoyed their holiday, and wishing everyone a happy new year.
Counsel Parker.
Received a couple of communications via email, and glad things worked out for everyone, and I hope everyone had a brand-new, wonderful new year. We're day two, we're in day two, so.
Day two, so far so good. All right. Counsel Franco.
Well, I have quite a few things here. I went on the human services tour, and, which was very nice to see all of the donated food and the toys for the holiday, for the town, it was very nice. Went to the TIF advisory board meeting tonight. There was a missing dog in our town, which we went out searching for, and I know some of the other councillors were involved in the search as well. Still missing. I received correspondence from Mr. Roger Kuhn, I believe his last name is Kunis, and Ms. Schmidt regarding renewable energy for the schools, which I also contacted the superintendent with this information, and that other people have contacted me about renewable energy for the new schools. I received correspondence from Mr. Burrows regarding the Groton Farm Project, and he's having a meeting on January seventh from five to seven thirty at RD eighty-six over New Londonut, eighty-six Gold Street. I had many residents in my neighborhood, that's near Cutler and Butler, talk to me about the state of the roads, since Eversource had put in the gas piping and the poor road conditions, which I've also been in touch with Mr. Bird about, and he's working on trying to come up with some solutions for that. I spoke with Ms. Sally Price regarding a blighted home on Ridgewood Drive, in which I've also spoke to Mr. Bird about this, and they're working on a solution. And that's it.
Thank you. Counsel O'Bry.
I think the only thing, I had a constituent contact me about a memorial that was supposed to be at the Noake Garden, and apparently there was a tree that was planted, it was for a teacher that was there. So, I need to do a little research because the family went and said they couldn't find it. So, I'll try to contact somebody that I think might know something about it and see if we can figure out what's, what's going on. I couldn't find it.
Perhaps Mr. Wright would be of use.
I'll ask our own for it, see what I can find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Zepary.
I have no report for you this evening.
Thank you. Just wanted to note, there was a generous donation from Sussman Shapiro to the Spicer Trust Fund. I guess it's an annual contribution that they make, and that money is distributed to families in need by Social Services. I had a meeting with Marion Galbraith and the manager regarding water taxi transportation, ground transportation, where we had some thoughts, and people are looking into possible solutions for that. Contact on pavement of River Road, and I disseminated information that the manager provided via Mr. Schneider on how the town decides which roads to pave, so he is, he has that information in his hands. And I believe that's everything. Oh, we did the, well, I didn't do. I pledged for our state representative, Dela Cruz, who did the Samaritan Swim on January first. A little bit warmer than it was last year, but there was quite a nice turnout and a lot of people for a good cause, so it was, it was very nice. Thank you. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The RTM had a meeting December twelfth, that was the last meeting, where they concluded that they gave themselves more work for the next month. So, they'll be meeting next Wednesday at seven thirty at Groton Town, Groton Town Senior Center. All are welcome, it should be a lightening...
Clerk of the, clerk of the council.
Well, you were, you were delighted with my, my assistant, Nathan Karen, who was here in your December meeting, and we have a new member of our staff, her name is Crystal Alexander, and she's been with us for three months, and we're keeping her.
Thank you. Town manager.
Just to mention on those roads involving Eversource that Counsel Franco mentioned, those are temporary patches, they will be paid better in the future. However, Eversource and I are setting up a meeting just to discuss communications. Could we get regular updates on where you're at, on, you know, on work in the town? I mean, they do, they do check with Public Works beforehand, but, you know, to, to run their plan by them, they don't get approval from us because they don't, you know, they don't require our approval. However, as they go along, I'd like to get updates on where, you know, we're stopping for the season, and this is a temporary patch, there'll be patches in spring, that type of thing, as well as maybe doing a better job on the temporary patch, so that meeting should be upcoming. Just to mention, the Tax Division, Cindy's department, and the Tax Division's finally up to full staff, went back to full hours on December twenty-sixth. Hopefully, it stays that way for a while. It, the Sussman Shapiro $2,000 donation is for the Perkins Fund.
Oh, Perkins, I'm sorry.
It used to be for the, yeah, that one kinda went away as it got depleted, so it's the Perkins Fund. And I sent council members local bid preference information for you to look at, as well as some questions to think about. However, I've asked Cindy to have our purchasing agent kinda put together, yeah, I'd like to get their thoughts on it before I actually put it on the agenda here for discussion. I want to see what kinds of, I'm sure she'd have some insights into it, so, it should be coming before you soon, but I have sent some info for you to review.
Thank you.
And I think that's it.
Okay. Any department heads here to speak?
Cindy, Cindy.
No? Okay. Committee reports, I have nothing from the committee at the whole. Chairman Heat is not here for personnel appointments or temporary rules. Rules committee, and nothing on public safety, so we are on to new business. Roman numeral ten A, twenty eighteen, five seventy-two dash one, contingency transfer Board of Education, FYE twenty nineteen. This is on page twenty-seven, and I believe this is Counsel Parker, correct?
Yes. Resolution approving a contingency transfer to Board of Education, whereas the Board of Education has received an increase to the FYE two thousand nineteen education cost-sharing grant for costs incurred in FYE two thousand eighteen for students from Puerto Rico displaced by Hurricane Maria, and whereas the Board of Education has been notified that Groton is in non-compliance for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen minimum budget requirement, MBR, by the amount of the increase to ECS, and whereas the impact to the FYE two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty MBR related to this increase to the FYE two thousand nineteen ECS is unknown at this time. Be it resolved that the $17,683 is transferred from the General Fund Contingency Function Number One Zero Seven Four to the Board of Education Function Number One Zero Eight Zero to meet the minimum budget requirement, MBR, for FYE two thousand nineteen, and refer to the RTM for approval. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Do you want to address this?
I was just gonna mention, originally, it was recommended to come out of fund balance, general fund, fund balance, but then upon further review, Finance Director has recommended the contingency fund, so it doesn't affect the overall budget. So, when she's here, if you have any questions?
And we have about three, three hundred ninety-two thousand left in contingency following this. Are there any questions on this item? Counsel O'Bry.
Just to refresh, I think we do not have to include this amount in our next educational budget, correct?
We don't believe so unless they, unless a new grant comes forward, that type of thing, correct? Any more questions?
Finance Director Landry is here, and she can come up and answer your question. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Sure. At this time, I did talk to Kathy Dempsey from the Department of Education, and there's a, was a letter in the packet that went to the COW, that they've said at this time, the funding was put in the ECS line item, they weren't quite sure why, but unless the state budget includes that again in the ECS, they do not, it's their interpretation, it would not have to be included into the MBR for next year. But as you know, when the state budget comes out in February and how quickly that gets adopted, we really don't know.
Okay, I appreciate that, I just wanted everybody to know what was happening.
Counsel Zepary.
No, ma'am.
Seeing no further questions, all those in favor of twenty eighteen, five seventy-two dash one contingency transfer Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to Roman numeral ten B, twenty eighteen, four twenty dash four, alteration of a scenic road Sandy Hollow Road Mystic Hollow Re subdivision. On page twenty-eight, this is Counsel Franco, please.
Whereas, is that fine?
Mm-hmm.
Article five of the Groton Code of Ordinance designation of scenic roads prohibits the scenic road from being altered or improved, including but not limited to widening of the right-of-way or of the travel portion of the highway, paving, changes of grade, straightening, and removal of stone walls, and removal of mature trees, except for the good cause determined by the council after a public hearing. Whereas, Joe...
Maestro Zenio.
Maestro Zenio of Brom Builders and developer of the Mystic Hollow Re subdivision on Sandy Hollow Road requested the town council hold a public hearing to solicit public input regarding the alteration of the Sandy Hollow Road right-of-way in order to install five new driveways. Whereas, the town council held a public hearing regarding the alteration of Sandy Hollow Road on December fourth, two thousand eighteen, whereas the proposed work does not encroach on or change the width, paving, or grade of Sandy Hollow Road, the proposed driveways will not change the character or adversely impact the neighborhood. And the proposed alterations are necessary to provide safe sightlines from the driveways, and now therefore be it resolved, the town council approves the alteration of the scenic road Sandy Hollow Road as presented on December fourth, two thousand eighteen. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by O'Bry. Any discussion on this item? And the bulk of the discussion takes place in the COW, so we don't have much left to say by the time we get to this point. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of twenty eighteen, four twenty dash four, alteration of a scenic road Sandy Hollow Road, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to River Road. This is item ten C, twenty eighteen, four nineteen four, alteration of a scenic road twelve oh one River Road. Counsel O'Bry, please.
Resolution to approve the alterations of a scenic road one two oh one River Road, whereas Article five of the Groton Code of Ordinance designation of scenic roads prohibits a scenic road from being altered or improved, including but not limited to widening of the right-of-way or of the travel portion of the highway, paving, changes of grade, straightening, removal of stone walls, and removal of mature trees, except for good cause determined by the council after a public hearing. Whereas, the town council had a public hearing on December fourth, two thousand eighteen to solicit public input regarding the alterations of the River Road right-of-way in order to install a new driveway at the request of Asia Bender, owner of twelve oh one River Road. Whereas, the proposed work does not encroach on or change the width, paving, or grade of River Road, the proposed driveway will not change the character or adversely impact the neighborhood, and the proposed driveway will not affect the existing stone walls and mature trees, now therefore be it resolved, the town council approves the alterations of a scenic road one two oh one River Road as presented on December fourth, two thousand eighteen. I so move.
Second.
Moved by O'Bry and seconded by Zepary. Any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Bender, for coming out again this evening. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Item ten D, twenty eighteen, five six three one, Connecticut Department of Agriculture Farm Viability Grant, on page thirty, and this is Counsel Zepary, please. of Agriculture Farm Viability Grant on page 30. And this is Counselor Zepari, please.
Be it resolved that it is in the best interest of the town of Grotton to enter into contracts with the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. In furtherance of this resolution, the Honorable John Burt, the town manager, is duly authorized to enter into and sign said contracts dated January 2, 2019, on behalf of the town of Grotton. The Honorable John Burt, the town manager, is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state of Connecticut in connection with said contracts, and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto.
Second. Moved by Zepari and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on approving the farm viability grant? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Item 10E, 2018-579-1 State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management Justice Assistant Grant on page 31. Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management's Justice Assistance Grant, whereas the Grotton Town Police Department plans to utilize the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management's Justice Assistant Grant, JAG, to purchase an auto VU Sharp X license plate reader, LPR, to be installed on a patrol vehicle. The utilization of an LPR provides an additional tool for combating criminal activity through the gathering of evidence and further enhances the jurisdiction's efficiency and effectiveness in addressing violent crime. And whereas violent crime remains a priority concern of the nation and our community, the ability to record and capture evidence of violent criminal behavior could lead to the identification, apprehension, and prosecution of said offenders. Also, an LPR will actively alert officers of unregistered vehicles, uninsured vehicles, and suspended operators. These issues create losses to others who may be victims of motor vehicle crashes, with uninsured vehicles, and losses to municipalities through property tax evasion. And whereas the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management's Justice Assistant Grant makes grant funding available to law enforcement agencies to support enforcement operations. This grant provides for a concerted full-time effort to reduce violent crime and aid in the prosecution of violent offenders. The grant provides 100% of the funding necessary to purchase all of the necessary equipment and installation. Now therefore be it resolved that the town manager, the Honorable John Burt, accepts the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management's Justice Assistant Grant in the anticipated total grant amount of $15,000. So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by O'Bree. Is there any -- yes, Mr. Burt?
I just want to mention, we're looking at the -- historically, grants haven't gone through the RTM, only budget amendments have. However, looking at the charter, we're still trying to figure out, there is some requirements for some grants to go through there. Pass-through grants do not. So this may end up going through the RTM. However, our legal counsel wanted to look at it a little more about which ones will and which ones won't. And we've had a former legal opinion that said, even if something is required to go through the RTM, you don't have to actually put it in a resolution. It's better if we do for tracking, obviously. But if it's legally required, it's legally required. It doesn't matter what you do in the resolution. But I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
And I should hopefully tomorrow or the next day. There's two days left until we try to get it.
There are. Okay, very good. Anything further? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote on 2018-579-1. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are on to 10F, 2018-536-1, the memorandum of agreement, 2018 State Homeland Security Grant Program Funds. Counselor Parker, please.
Resolution. Resolution authorizing entering into a memorandum of agreement between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security and Town of Grotton. Whereas the Grotton Town Police plans to utilize the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security Grant Funding to support regional set-aside projects. And whereas the memorandum of agreement and authorizing resolution is a requirement for receiving homeland security grant funds. And whereas the documents detail use of local homeland security grant funds and the administration of the DEMUS Region 4 Homeland Security Grant Program and details terms of custodial ownership of assets purchased with regional homeland security funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the town manager, John Burt, may act on behalf of the town of Grotton with respect to receipt and use of 2018 State Homeland Security Grant Program Funds to support regional set-aside projects and to approve him to execute said memorandum of agreement. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Is there any discussion? Counselors Zepari?
I just wanted to say how actually I am that the town manager, John Burt, is not described as the Honorable John Burt in this resolution.
The other one was a state-required language.
Any other discussion?
I tried to be honorable.
You are, John. Indeed. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2018-536-1, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. Counselor Franco, this is the resolution. So we are on to 2018 -- oh, no, I'm sorry, wrong thing. We are on 2018-866 Blight Ordinance Amendment on page 53. And the clerk provided...
Pitch 33.
Pitch 33, yes. The clerk provided a slightly revised. And you have that, Counselor Franco? Thank you. Does everybody have a copy of that?
Yes.
The only revision is putting the actual items that you are on there.
Resolution to approve changes to the Blight Ordinance, whereas on July 24th, 2018, and August 28th, 2018, the committee of the whole met in regular session and discussed the Blight Ordinance. Best practices associated with remediation and potential revisions. With staff from the Office of Planning and Development Services, and whereas a brief history of the Blight Ordinance, the governing statutes within the Connecticut General Statutes, and the implication process of the ordinance was processed by the code enforcement officer. And whereas the committee of the whole directed staff to consider revisions as discussed in the meeting, and whereas the Town of Grotton Office of Planning and Development Services presented a revised draft of the Blight Ordinance in the committee of the whole on October 23rd, 2018, and whereas a public hearing was held on December 4th, 2018, to solicit public input on the proposed modifications to Blight Ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the revisions to sections 2A, GHI, C, 3G, 5A, B, C, D, and 8 of the -- to the Blight Ordinance, number 281, as presented the town council on December 4th, 2008. I so move.
Is it GHL?
L. It is L.
GHL.
Thought it might have been L. Okay.
That's okay. As long as we noted here, we're good.
Okay.
So it's moved by Franco. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Yes?
I just wrote a note here, just that I wanted to mention tonight, that I would like the Blight Officer, I mean, I believe we've already discussed this, but the Blight Officer, to utilize these changes and enforce them, which will bring relief to neighbors and neighborhoods who are being subjected to the derelict and dilapidation of properties. Though, I would like him to also find means to help residents who are unable to financially and physically correct their blighted situations. But I also want to bring up one more thing, and I also -- that was mentioned tonight, that Mr. Counselor Zepari had discussed in the past, was the -- specifically, the boats and machinery in a state of disrepair that cannot be used for its intended purpose. This had been discussed prior as well, and seeing that a citizen also has an issue, I don't know exactly how we should handle it, but we don't want somebody that is going to repair a piece of machinery or a boat, and he's getting slapped with a fine because he has it on his property. I mean, it's sort of vague, and it's going to be up to the Blight Officer's discretion, I believe. But I do believe --
He's very fair.
I understand that, but I do understand where there is an issue on this.
Counselor O'Bree?
I just want to mention that I was one of the people that asked for the Blight Ordinance to be looked at. And what you -- you can have anything that you really want in your backyard. As it's explained, they don't go into the backyard, especially if there's a fence around it. It's more the area that affects your neighbors. So I think if they use it correctly, it should help them. I appreciate very much the time they put into making the changes, and I think it will help a lot.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on 2018-86-6 Blight Ordinance Amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. I'm sorry?
That is referred.
Refer to the RTM, yes.
So it'll be first of 45 days, then before co-acting?
Okay. We are on to 10H, Town Manager Contract. And we have the resolution here, please, if you could read this. Thank you.
Resolution to approve and update Town Manager's contract, whereas the town council recently conducted a performance -- oh, they -- oh, yeah. Evaluation for the Town Manager resulting in a positive outcome. And whereas the town council recognizes the contribution of the Town Manager in the process to secure approvals for the location and building of the schools as part of the Grotton 2020 Plan. And whereas the town council recognizes the Town Manager's cost-saving measures within the Town Manager's budget, including elimination of a full-time position. And whereas the town council desires to make changes to the Town Manager's contract, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign and update a five-year contract with the Town Manager with an effective date of December 30th, 2018, to include the following: 5% salary increase, setting the employer's contribution to $5,000 annually for the deferred compensation plan or 529 plan of the Town Manager's choice, addition of one year on the term of the contract. And be it further resolved that the funds to pay for these changes shall come from the existing budget for the remainder of FYE 219. I so move.
Second. Thank you. Moved by O'Bree and seconded by Baumgartner. Mr. Burt?
I'm sorry, I need to make one change, request one change. Can you strike that five-year, because it's actually slightly over five-year. I meant to take that out under the first resolved.
Tell me where you are to sign an updated...
Right. Updated contract.
So we're striking five-year?
Right.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we need to amend, or are we good with it as it is?
We are just going to approve the resolution as amended.
Okay. Any discussion? Is there any objection to the amendment that the manager has requested?
So how is going to read the result?
Result that the mayor is authorized to sign an updated contract. He just wants the five-year stricken.
Give me a year.
He didn't hear you.
She mocked me.
Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2018-560-1 Town Manager Contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 10I, 2018-571-1 Town Council Personnel Appointments 2019 Meeting Calendar on page 35. And I just wanted to say that I believe the heading is incorrect on this. I believe it should say Resolution approving 2019 Town Council Personnel Appointments Regular Meeting Schedule, instead of just Town Council Regular Meeting Schedule.
Yeah, I thought that that was re...
And Lisa had resent out, just your packet or it got out in the mail, she resent out the digital copy with the correct language.
Thank you. Counselors Zepari?
Be it resolved that the town council approves the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee regular meetings scheduled for 2019 as follows: Tuesday, January 15, Tuesday, February 19, Tuesday, March 19, Tuesday, April 16, Tuesday, May 21, Tuesday, June 18, Tuesday, July 16, Tuesday, August 20, Tuesday, September 17, Tuesday, October 15, Tuesday, November 19, Tuesday, December 17. All meetings will begin at 5:30 PM in Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex 134, Grotton Long Point Road, on the third Tuesday of each month. I so move.
Second. Moved by Zepari and seconded by Parker. Any discussion on the Personnel Appointments Calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-571-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. That takes us through all our normal items. We are on to item number 11, other business. So any counsel -- or Mr. Burt, yes?
I just wanted to remember if we officially talked about it here or not, but I wanted to -- I put it in the email format, that we're looking at a special COW on the third Tuesday, to have the developer, the preferred developer for the MECE Mystic Education Center come and talk with the council. I wanted to make sure that that's okay with the council, that we do that.
The third Tuesday of January?
Yes.
So that, let's see what date that is. That would be the 22nd? No, the 15th?
Fifteenth, right.
15th. Is everybody available?
That would be the only item on the agendas to meet with them.
At what time?
I told them 6:30, because we were going to do 6:30, but it could be different if need be. I don't know if I'd rather drag them from...
It may come into conflict with planning and zoning in the city, which I'm a member of.
Okay.
Time being.
For the time being. So that would be January 15th at 6:30, and this would be a presentation by the developers of Mystic Education Center. Is there anybody else who has a conflict with that? Okay. So I would say, since everyone else seems to be all right with it, you should probably go ahead and just schedule that, and hopefully we can get that to work out. The date is January 15th? It's the third Tuesday at 6:30? Any other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Moved by Parker. Is there a second? Seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:51. Thank you.